I'm Dan Wallace, Penn State alumnus, class of 1975, and a board member of Penn Staters for Responsible Stewardship. I'll be your moderator as we spend some time together getting to know the five alumni trustee candidates who are on this year's ballot and seated here with me today. I'd like to point out this year that Penn Staters for Responsible Stewardship will not, repeat, will not be endorsing candidates for this election as we have done going back to 2012. Instead, we are bringing you this event strictly as a public service in the hope that we can add value to Penn State's election process and help you learn a little more about the alumni who are interested in representing all of us on the Board of Trustees. The choice to select the three most qualified candidates is all yours. As you might know, the elections open Monday, April 10th, and continues through May 4th. If you have voted before or have received some correspondence from Penn State via email in the past, you should receive a ballot. If you need to request a ballot or have specific questions, please call VoteNet at 866-307-0041. Repeat, 866-307-0041. Before we get started, let me introduce you to the candidates seated in alphabetical order, not ballot positions, but alphabetical order. To my right is Robert Bauscher, 1986. Then Bob Jubelier, 1959, 1962, J.D., and he's an incumbent elected trustee. Al Lord, 1967. Al's also an incumbent elected trustee. And to my left is Jay Paterno, 1991. And then Alice Pope, 1979, 1983, 1986 graduate and an incumbent elected trustee. Okay, let's go over some housekeeping items. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question, so let's get to it. This question is for all five candidates, and it revolves around priorities and qualifications. Let's start with Robert. If elected by Penn State alumni to serve as a trustee, what would be your top three priorities in order for the next three years? Two minutes, Robert.
Thank you so much, Dan. And PS4S, it's great to be back. We were here last year with fellow challenger Larry Schultz and the three incumbents Ted Brown, Barbara Duran, and Bill Holtie. We had a really interesting and informative meeting, and I think we're going to have another one this year, too. I mean, how can you not have one when you have a Lord and a Pope on the panel? I mean, if my last name were King, we'd have the Middle Ages trifecta. But let's get this meeting started. Let's go with priority number one for me. To help our top-notch faculty and staff, I want to help foster a community-oriented work environment like the one Penn State had in the 1960s. You can't have a world-class university without world-class faculty and staff. And right now, in order to attract especially members of the millennial generation, we need to have a community-oriented work environment at all of the Penn State campuses. I've been visiting quite a few this week. I went to Barron College on Monday, and I went to Beaver yesterday, and I was at Abington three years ago. And they all have community-oriented work environments. We also need to make a Penn State education more affordable, and we need to do that by maximizing alternative revenue sources like the Hershey Medical Center and the online world campus. And I'd also like to help usher in a new era of genuine openness, transparency, and diversity on the Board of Trustees. Dan.
Thank you. Bob?
Thanks, Dan. And thank you, PS, for once again bringing the alumni trustees online to the alumni and anybody else who wants to watch. This is going to be a remarkable election, I think. I think it is a crucial time in Penn State's history as to who are going to be the three elected trustees. My priorities haven't changed very much. I believe the Board is way too large. We have, I think, 38 members of the Board, and it seems to keep getting larger and larger. Last year, the year before, one of the issues was a piece of legislation in Harrisburg that would revamp the Board and reduce it considerably. I think we need to do that. I spent 32 years in Harrisburg, in Pennsylvania Senate. I was in top leadership 26 out of those 32 years, and am the longest-serving president pro temp in Pennsylvania history. I know a little bit about legislation, how to get it done, how to work across the aisle to get things done, and how to approach various issues which can be controversial. I think certainly, folks, we have nine votes. There's an old axiom that comes in when you're in a legislative process or any voting process. The minority will have its say, and the majority will have its way. So what do we do? We can't pass anything without working across the aisle, so to speak. So it's incumbent upon us to be able to work to get some things done. The number-one thing I'd like to get done, really, and the guy to my left started it first, and I hope we repeat it, and that is the repeal of the Free Report. The repeal of the Free Report is going to be a major, major issue, I think. Al Lord introduced it several years ago. I think it got nine votes, and that's all it got.
Hey, Rob. Bob? Can we wrap it up? We're trying to keep to two minutes, so go ahead. I'll let you finish your thought.
I'm sorry. I was watching the clock. Thank you. At any rate, I look forward to another three years and to making a difference as I have in my entire professional life.
Thank you. Go ahead, Al.
Apologize for that.
That's all right. We'll just keep it. We've got a lot of things to cover, so we want to stay on time. Thank you. Go ahead, Al.
So I'm actually a bit of an imposter at this table, not because I'm not very interested in Penn State, but I have tried to give myself as much time as possible to make a very key decision. And actually, the reason that we're here, there are five of us. Four are here to tell you why they want to be on the Board, and I'm the fifth. And I'm going to try to tell you why I want to leave the Board. I had, I just think it's unfair for me to stay on the Board, given my change of heart that's taken place over a period of three years about my alma mater. I joined the Board to help, I thought, with justice for, well, directly for individuals, one, of course, deceased. My passion still lies in that same direction, but I'm losing passion for Penn State. And I think you may have seen a comment that I made recently that the university, and I saw it clear as day in 2014 when I walked into the Boardroom, the university that exists today has separated itself from the past, my 50-some years of history with the university. It is a different university. Like Bob said, we get nine votes. In a lot of ways, it's worse than that. But the point is that it's very difficult to fix what needs to be fixed through the Boardroom. We've made a number of accomplishments. Jay's family suing the NCAA got us some wins back. Frankly, in the bottom line, it got us back to the Rose Bowl. And I've seen progress made at Penn State, but it's been made in the litigation front where I've been working. Is that two minutes already?
Yeah, go ahead. All righty, you wrapped up? Thank you.
Guess so.
Well, yes, I am.
We'll come back.
All right, thanks.
Okay, now, let's go to Jay on the top three priorities.
Okay, let me talk about three priorities. Number one is the cost of a Penn State degree. Without question, this is one of the challenges that we face, not just at Penn State, but it's one of the great challenges of our time as a nation. We are, you know, we came out of World War II and created one of the great middle classes in the history of this planet. And part of it was because of the GI Bill. And part of it was because a generation of people graduated from college without being saddled with debt. They could start families, they could buy homes and start to build wealth shortly after they got out of college, and that's gone. But we have great people at Penn State. We have great minds in our faculty. We've got great minds in our alumni base. We've got to find a way to bring down that cost, and I've got some ideas, and we'll get into those later. But that, number one, is the biggest challenge we face as a university, because we're going to be competing with online degrees, going to be competing with a lot of other avenues and a lot of other people. And again, I spent 17 years coaching football at Penn State. I was in high schools in 30 different states, and I know how magic the words "Penn State" were to so many people when you brought it up. But for so many of those people in those low-income high schools, it was an impossible dream. Next thing I want to talk about is an open and inclusive leadership. We've got to make sure that people feel they have a seat at the table. We've got to make sure that our faculty feels that they can pursue certain things and that they can, are free to do some of the things they want to do with research without fear of any kind of reprisals. And finally, I want to inspire excellence in this generation. I think one of the things that's happened in higher education around this country is we've become very, very attuned to making sure that we don't damage anybody's feelings. There's great inflation issues at some places, not all, but we've got to make sure that we're asking people to do the tough things it takes to earn a world-class degree at a place like Penn State, and I want us to be a national leader in those three areas.
Thank you. Alice, top three priorities.
The top priority for any trustee at any institution is to protect and preserve the mission and the culture of the institution. Our culture, for a long time now, has been success with honor. We are people who do very well, and we do it the right way. I am not discouraged about that culture still living at Penn State, but we must nurture it. We cannot allow ourselves to lose it. Many faculty, students, administrators are protecting that culture, and we need to protect that at the highest levels. Our mission is our land grant status. We're not just another public institution in Pennsylvania. We are the land grant. That means that we have a special responsibility to provide affordable education to the citizens of the Commonwealth and also to give back, not only through good, well-educated citizens, but through research and economic growth. Finally, to support all of that, we must have transparency and inclusiveness within our Board. We are making steps to get there. We have a lot farther to go.
Okay, thank you. That was a good start. Let's keep it going. Here's the second question, and Al, we're going to give you the lead on this one, and we'll go around the table. Given the fact that alumni elected trustees hold a significant numerical disadvantage, why do you think you can make a difference, or in the case of the incumbents, are making a difference? Go ahead.
Well, I think we do make a difference, but we don't do it with numbers. We do it by making ourselves a pain in the butt and staying on issues. It's a very steep uphill climb, and there are active participants on the other side who are trying to put hurdles in our way. I have come to believe that fixing things inside the Boardroom is virtually impossible, and that ultimately, as Bob was talking about earlier, the answer is either going to lie with the Legislature, and trust me, it's got to be a pretty bad problem for me to even suggest that. But otherwise, Pennsylvania's got an enormous interest in the ongoing success of Penn State, and Jay mentioned the magic of the Penn State name. I worry, I feel very positive that Graham Spanier will ultimately be vindicated and will win his appeal. I have less confidence that the Penn State that is defining itself even today will be quite so successful. That was a fair meander.
You still have a couple seconds, so.
Well, that's okay.
Bob, go ahead. Make a difference.
My entire professional life, I've tried to make a difference in everything I did. As I've said, I've worked across the aisle, I've brought people together, and we got things done. Many of the things that others have said here just moments ago, I certainly believe in. I was the sponsor, the prime sponsor of the Sunshine Act, which, as you know, provides for open government, and I'm not going to go through the details. I'm also the prime sponsor of the Tuition Account Plan, the TAP program, so that parents and grandparents, and like me, a grandparent who is so thrilled that his grandson, Sam Langman, is going to be going to Penn State in the fall, and he's going to be using the TAP program that his grandfather introduced and took five years to get done. We have got to find a way to work across the aisle, so to speak. I have experience in it. I know how to do it. We need help from the Legislature, and we have a great patron in Penn State's own, or University Park, Penn State State College. Jake Corman is the Majority Leader of the Senate, and he's certainly been helpful. John Urdicek, Senator from Wilkes-Barre, has been a tremendous help. We have got to find a way to bring things back. And as I said, I started to say, if and when, I'd like to say, that we reject the Free Report, it opens up the gate for everything. There are a lot of things that can be done once that is accomplished, and I think we would pay respect to those who have put their necks on the line in the past by getting that done. There's only going to be three members of the previous Board from November 9th, 2011 that are going to be left after May. Three members of the old guard trustees. So when we call them old guard, we're only talking about three people. There are some good people on the other side. We need to find a way to work with them to get things done. We need to do some of the things that have been mentioned before, and that is certainly keep Penn State at a reasonable cost, so that middle-class families can afford it.
Bob, I'm going to have to break in.
And by the way, that's it.
Robert?
Thank you, Dan. PS4S, openness and transparency is a big issue these days, and many people talk about openness and transparency as if they're just concepts. But I can tell you from personal experience, they're commitments. And for me, they're a way of life. I know it happens when you shroud your life in secrecy, and I know it happens when you let go of that unnecessary secrecy. And that's why I decided, at the age of 34, to make my life open and transparent, not just in terms of my sexual orientation, but also in terms of my professional life. I'm an accountant and a writer by trade, so I have a dual career going on, so I can do both words and numbers. And I have an open-door policy for all employees who want to come see me, and I have an open records policy for anyone who's authorized to look at the financial transactions that make up the financial statements that I generate, which I've been doing for over 20 years for various employers. And so openness and transparency, to me, is something that I look for immediately when I go into a new situation, like a new employer, which I did a year ago. And if you go on my website, you can look at an endorsement letter from my current employer, Dollar X, from the Chairman of the Board, and he will tell you about what improvements I've made over the course of this one year that I've been with the company. And in fact, my website address is right there. It's bauscher4psu.com. I'm very proud of this website because it will show you all my qualifications and stances right there, and it's all in one place, and you can pick and choose how you want to see it. You don't have to look at everything on the website. You can just, you want to see the four-minute video that I made in 2014, you can see that. You can see my stances on about seven different issues that will help you evaluate me as a candidate, because I certainly don't want you to vote for me just because I'm gay, or just because I'm from San Diego, or just because I'm 6'6" tall. I want you to vote for me because I am the strongest, one of the three strongest candidates in your opinion. Thank you.
Alice, making a difference?
Our Board needs more trustees with backgrounds in education. The Board itself has said this, the Faculty Senate has said it. Currently, I am the only faculty member on the Board except for the one elected by the Faculty Senate. This really makes a difference. I have taught in private universities, public universities, and a private medical school. Faculty and a researcher. Every day, I work with students. Every day, I understand the needs and the desires of faculty. Every day, I work within an educational institution that is not run like a corporation. Educational governance is not the same as corporate governance, and having that insight is something that is a bit of a rarity on our Board. I have really appreciated having the opportunity to work with people who have valued that I bring that to our Board, and I look forward to doing more of the same.
Jay?
Well, when you talk about working with other people, there's very few professions in the world where you've got to work with other people as much as you do in coaching. And when you get into a room full of coaches, there are a lot of egos involved, some very big, some not so big. So I've got a lot of experience in dealing with people that are high-level, high intellect, and also very opinionated, and that's fine. That's part of life. That's how this world works. I think what's going to be a difference is a lesson that I learned coaching, is break down their resistance with your persistence. And there are going to be issues we agree on. There are going to be issues that we can find common ground on. There are things this university has done in the last five and a half years that I agree with, and there's obviously some things I disagree with. So when I walk in that room, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected by you and fortunate enough to be chosen to serve, because again, this is a service position, you know, I'm going to come in at this thing from day one with the idea that I'm going to extend an open hand, and if I'm greeted with an open hand, then we will work together, and we'll make things happen, and we'll do our best. We're not always going to agree. There's going to be some problems. We're not always going to get what we want, but that's the way the world works. So I think the key for this is going to be that we have an open, transparent Board, because it's a lot easier to have certain opinions and stick with them if you can hide behind the shroud of secrecy. So I certainly, along with whoever else is elected, and everybody on this Board, on this panel, has said the same thing. We want an open, transparent governance in this Board, and that's going to make it a lot easier for us to work together when we have to actually expose what we're about and the stances that we take, and that's what I'm pushing for.
Very good. The third question, we're going to start with Alice, by the way. Can you please describe the skill set you would bring to the Penn State Board of Trustees that you think makes you the most suited and qualified? Alice?
As I've just finished saying, the perspective of an educator is a very useful thing on a university Board, and it is a rarity. So I believe very firmly that every decision that we face, even if it's bricks and mortar, has to be understood within the perspective of science, research, and instruction. How are these things affected by these decisions? Being an educator, I'm good at being persuasive. I'm good at doing my homework. I'm good at bringing knowledge and up-to-date information to any problem that I face. I've tried to do that on the Board. I also am good at working with other people. If you think that faculty members have a lot of power in universities, I would have a different conversation with you. We get our way only because we can collaborate with other people and enact policies that are going to work for our academic departments and for our students. People's skills are critical for this next round of trustee elections. We have real opportunities here, and I've already begun to cross the aisle, as Bob says, and to make some respectful relationships with people who really want to do the best for the university.
Good. Jay, skill sets?
Well, in the last five and a half years since I've no longer at Penn State coaching, I've done almost 80 different alumni events at places as far east as Boston and all the way out to California over the course of my career. So one of the skill sets I'm going to bring to is a line of communication with alumni all over the place. I hear all the time from alumni and donors that have very strong opinions about what should and should not happen to Penn State, and I think those are voices that need to be heard. The last, just this past month, I did three alumni events in Atlanta, Columbia, South Carolina, and Hilton Head, and one of the things I did is I handed out sheets to everybody, and I said, "Give me ideas. Give me three things that you think are important." And that's something that I want to encourage, is to have those things happen. In terms of other skill sets, crisis management, over the last five and a half years, I've had unfortunately to stand in the front lines to defend Penn State, Penn State football, and certainly my father's memory, for five and a half years in some very, very hostile situations. And I've stood up for Penn State over the course of that time and shown leadership in those areas. Education. Alice mentioned that we only have one faculty member. I spent over two decades at the University of Virginia, at the University of Connecticut, at James Madison University, and Penn State University. And I've been involved in so much more than just football. I've lectured classes. I've been involved in a lot of things besides that, and so I have great experience there. And the last thing is, I have great contacts with a lot of faculty members. And since I've announced that I was going to run for this, many of them have come to me, sought me out, and have said, "Hey, think about this. Think about that." They've told me some things that are going on at Penn State, and I think that's a valuable contact that we're going to have. So those are things I think I can bring to this Board.
Good, thank you. Al, most suited and qualified in skill sets?
Well, I was here three years ago, and I'm sure I declared openly I was easily the most qualified and prepared. And frankly, I think I was, certainly more than qualified. I obviously am coming at this today from a different position. I will mention that we, I think we count something like 600,000 alums at Penn State. 600,000 alums elect less than 25% of the Board members. Less than 25%. Actually, as we were closing the gap on votes, because we've been starting to pick up votes from others, many on the Board who had been, who I have seen write and be interviewed and suggest that the Board should be smaller, decided to enlarge the Board to dilute the vote of the nine of us. Because we weren't close, close, but we were getting close. And so I say that to remind my associates here that those across-the-aisle skills will frustrate you. They frustrated me to the point where I've decided to leave. But I have not decided to leave Penn State. I hope that the Paterno family and the Spanier family will continue to accept my help. Obviously, we'll put it forward. I intend to help the Board, my guys on the Board, if you will, the alums, work on the free material that we've been reviewing. I've reviewed a lot of material, and I've learned a lot of things. I've learned that Louis Free hung four honorable, highly, it's not highly, it's not high integrity. Okay, yeah. High-integrity guys, hung them out to dry, and manufactured a motive. So I only say these things, obviously, because I'm not going to be a candidate, but I think it's worth everybody knowing, and we've got three of us here, three of us, Anthony and Ted out here, and, you know, and the fact is, the five of us and the other four of us have really hung together tough, and all but one of us was at the Graham Spanier trial. I will continue to work with you guys. I'm just not sitting through any more of those meetings.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah.
Sued and qualified.
Jay, let me just tell you, sit in a room with 26, 24, and I can tell you that it's not easy to get the votes all the time, because everybody wants off the reservation from time to time. So whatever skill set I bring, I guess, sharing a different light with you from the political light from Harrisburg. And make no mistake about it, Harrisburg is an important component of our existence. We had a situation with the previous governor where he wanted to cut the living daylights out of the budget, and many of us lobbied very hard, and with the help of, again, Senator Corman, we were able to get it back to the wonderful position of flat funding. And flat funding is what we're going to have today. The Commonwealth is in deep, deep trouble financially, and there's going to be, there's going to be people out there who say, "Why does Penn State have to get all this money? Why does Pitt, or Temple, or Lincoln have to get this money?" There are state-related universities. It takes 2/3 of the vote of the House and Senate to give, to get that appropriation passed. I have experience in bringing people across the aisle, and I truly believe there's some very good people who may not be alumni elected trustees, but who care about the university and who have been accustomed these last several years to opposing the alumni trustees for whatever reason, because we want to go about things differently than they do. So the skill set I would certainly present would be all the contacts I have in Harrisburg, my experience on bringing people together, my ability to sit down and understand issues and understand that the important future for Penn State, our beloved, our wonderful Penn State, is that we don't become the second paragraph anymore, or at least we're not the first paragraph. What happened to Michigan? What happened to Michigan State? What happened at Miami? What happened to Baylor? You can go on and on and see, we got hammered. We got hammered by the NCAA, and because we fought back, at least when the nine of us were elected, we were there. And now, the wonderful president of the NCAA doesn't dare go into any of the others for fear he's going to have another Penn State. That's the skill set I will bring, again, to the trustees.
Thank you. Robert?
Thank you, Dan. When I first ran in 2012, I did not know how to use Facebook at all. And I was told by people, "If you're going to, you know, get to be a candidate, if you want to take this seriously, you have to know how to learn Facebook." And so that's what I did. I learned how to use Facebook. And today, in 2017, it was the primary tool I used to get the 250 nominations I needed to be sitting here at this table today. In fact, one of the reform groups said, a leader from that reform group said, "Maybe we should change our name to Robert Bauscher until May," just simply because of the number of times I was posting on Facebook over the past, since mid-January. I've posted at least 40 times on it because I want to communicate with all of you. I want to use my written communication skills and also my verbal communication skills. As I told you, I'm very open and transparent. You can come up to me at any time, and you can say anything you want to me. I worked in the taxicab business for over 10 years, so trust me, I know what it takes to stand up to people, and I know what it takes to learn how to communicate with people even when people are not communicating, let's say, tactfully with you. So I'm accustomed to hearing people yell at me. I'm accustomed to that. You know, that's no problem for me. Some people don't like that, but I have no problem with it. I will listen to you with my two big ears here, and I will take in whatever you say. I'm also one of the most tenacious people you ever meet. And a lot of people think, because I have kind of a non-abrasive personality, they don't describe me as tenacious. But that's what it took to get 250 nominations, folks. It is much harder to do than it sounds, and it's the same tenacity I've used at my current employer, and it's the same tenacity I use in the taxicab business, and I'll use it too on the Board of Trustees, trust me.
Thank you, Robert. First of all, I want to thank you all for listening to the two-minute rule, okay? I commend you for timing issues. We're going to switch gears a little bit, and we're going to talk about tuition, Hershey Medical, and finances. And we're going to specifically address some questions to some of the incumbents first. Alice, given your experience in higher ed, what are your thoughts on the current level of tuition for Penn State students? In-state tuition is $17,900. What do you think it should be, and what should be done to ensure that Penn State remains competitive in the marketplace?
Our in-state tuition is a disgrace. There's no other way to put it. It is high when you compare with most of the other 50 states. I was looking recently at in-state tuition for the state of New York because they have proposed to give free tuition to New York state residents. And I looked to see how much money that students would be saving, wondering would they now stay in-state rather than come to Penn State? In-state tuition in New York is something like half of what in-state Penn State tuition is. We are not fulfilling our mission. I can't put a number on what it should be, but it's a big, big problem. And it's a problem primarily because our state funding has decreased by a third since 2008. There are only five states that have decreased state funding to higher education as much as Pennsylvania has over the last decade. I'm not sure how to solve that, but that is a massive problem, and it is something that I believe we need to communicate better about all the ways that Penn State returns on that investment. Penn State is an enormous economic driver for the Commonwealth. Beyond that, the technology and research that we provide as products betters the lives of individuals within the Commonwealth nationally and internationally. Am I out of time? No, I thought I heard you say stop.
No, no, I didn't.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Bob? We're going to go to you, Bob Jubelir. Speaking of finances, there are media reports that expenses related to the Sandusky scandal have topped a quarter of a billion dollars and are still rising. What are your thoughts on how this has impacted Penn State's budget, and how can we stop the madness?
Wow.
Two minutes.
Geez, two minutes. The only thing I can tell you is this, I don't know what has been paid by the insurance company and what's paid by the universities, by the university. It has been an absolute disaster. The word Sandusky now stands for things that, we all know what it stands for, for molesting little boys. And that tragedy has, I don't think it's defined Penn State because our admissions have been going very well. But again, the schools I mentioned, Michigan State, who has a bigger scandal than Penn State does right now, and thank you to the president of Michigan State who bombarded Penn State with her nasty comments when we were trying to fight back. It is a, we are always mentioned. It's always Sandusky. It's always Penn State. The scandal at Penn State. It's ESPN. It's the media that comes out and tears us apart. It is a problem. It is, it's, I can't tell you how much money it has cost in actual tuition that has an influence on its tuition. I don't know what was paid, everything that was paid by insurance and what was paid by the university. But the university needs to cut back spending, just as the legislature is cutting back spending right now. And for Pete's sakes, there are, got to be people in the legislature who want to own higher education. Everybody wants to own basic education. And again, Senator Corman made the statement on Capitol Days when I was taking the students around to meet legislative leaders. Nobody wants to own higher education. So it becomes a real problem when it comes to financing, and I wish I could tell you everybody's our friend, but they're not.
Very good. Thank you. We're going to take a short break and return in a few minutes. Good afternoon, everybody, again. During our intermission, we apologize to folks that may have tuned in earlier. During the intermission, Al Lord has decided that he is going to officially resign from running for Board of Trustee elections, and we are going to go under the assumption that there's going to be four members of the board now for the election. So we're going to move on with the forum and going to start on governance issues. And this question is for Jay Paterno. Last year, when you endorsed the incumbent trustees, you wrote on your blog, "The election is too important. It's not a time, it's not, it is not time to change horses in the middle of the race. What makes a difference this year, and what are you now asking alumni to change horses?"
Well, given that Al just stepped down, that question's kind of, I guess that question's kind of moot now. But I think the thing that's important is this, when you talk about governance of this university, it's been alluded to earlier, the board is too big. There's no question about it. You know, we have 600,000 living alumni, nine alumni elected trustees. I think one of the things, if you said to me, "You can go in a room and come up with the perfect governance structure," the alumni elected trustees would have the majority at all times. 17 board members, whatever number you want, but nine of them are alumni elected trustees because of the fact that we're the ones that have the most invested constituents. When you look at Penn State, when you come to Penn State and you get your degree at Penn State, you are buying into what Penn State's about. I was on a plane just a couple of weeks ago with a faculty member, and he said, "You know, Jay, the thing you're going to, the reality is, when you go to get a job interview, there are two names on your diploma, and the name at the top gets you that job interview. And then the name below is what gets the job." And I say, you know, it struck me as something that was very, very important, and I think that, you know, people talked about how this situation five and a half years ago was handled, and they said it was the corporate model. Well, you know, this is not a corporation. People that have Penn State stock, so to speak, in a degree can never divest themselves of it. So I think having the alumni elected trustees become the majority in a revamped board, I think is key because of the fact that we represent the people that have the most invested in Penn State. We have to answer to a constituency that is very active and very vocal and very involved and has the most invested in this university. So I think that would be the governance change I would make.
Alice, this one's for you on governance. If you were asked to build the most effective governing board from scratch, what would it look like?
I actually was thinking about that question a couple of years ago when there were a number of governance changes that were under discussion, and we were essentially trying to do just that. How could we reconfigure the board in a way that it would work most effectively? And one of the things I did, because I researched things, is I went back to see what was the original board configuration like. From a very early time, Penn State's board did have these different representatives from the varying constituency groups. That's almost unique to Penn State. I hear people say that idea is outmoded. I believe that it is often important when making decisions for the future to consider the intentions of the founder of the institution. And our founders thought that it was right and proper that people from agriculture, people from industry, people from the alumni, all have some people on the board who are representing that perspective. So I do believe that having those various groups, or some configuration of various groups, especially alumni, of course, is important and useful. But there are too many people. We have 36 voting members. We have two other members who are non-voting. 38 people in a room? We actually do pretty well when we get together and we start to discuss substantive issues, but you know how long it takes to have one statement from all 38 people? And then you don't have an opportunity to go back and say, "Wait, I have a question about your position," or "I've changed my mind. Could you talk to me more about how you're thinking about things?" Our board has not been inclusive for that reason because it's very hard to share decision-making fairly across that many people. And what has happened is that there has been a smaller group of people who have often withheld information from the rest of the board. And so I want to be very concrete when we talk about transparency. That's one of the things that I'm talking about, is information should be shared with everyone. Everyone's point of view should be brought into decision-making, and that cannot be done with a board the size that we have.
Okay. Alice, very good. Bob Jubelir, you credit yourself as having written the Modern Sunshine Law. How so? And how can you apply this unique credential to the transparency issues that continue to face university governance?
Well, by all means, the Sunshine Act, there's nothing wrong with the Sunshine Act. What is wrong is the enforcement of the penalties, and they need to be more enforced. Spent five years trying to get the Sunshine Act passed in Harrisburg, negotiating with local governments and with those that were going to be under the Sunshine Act. They have the same thing under the right to know. Transparency, and we've heard that word, I don't know how many times already today, is an important factor in governing. And you not only govern at the local level or at the state level, at the federal level, you're governing, as we do, a large university that has, that is the number-one economic engine in Pennsylvania. They create jobs, and they create wealth in Pennsylvania. It is, it just comes down to enforcement. Penn State has somewhat covered, at least by the Sunshine Act, not the same way local government has been. And perhaps we need more. Again, what, there's nobody on this board, no one, of 38 people, who have the experience in Harrisburg that I have. I was there for Capitol Days and was able to take the students to see the leaders. We talked about how important it was that Penn State be more recognizing, and things that are going to be very positive for the state can start with Penn State. I got involved in the Millennial Science Complex. I negotiated that with Governor Rendell, and I think it was either $40 or $50 million that we were able to bring to. That's the most remarkable place anywhere in the world, and the same with IST, when they were going to cut their budget, and I'm talking too long.
That's all right. I'll politely tell you to quit.
What politician doesn't?
Robert, as a follow-up to the discussion on transparency, your position statement states, "I will fight to keep the discussion in public forums and out-of-closed-door executive sessions." Please explain how you would accomplish those.
Well, what happens, it seems, at trustee meetings is, once they get into an area that seems like it's not, you know, going to get public approval too much, then they start shifting towards executive sessions. I will be the first one to raise my hands and say, "Let's keep this in the public forum where it belongs." And maybe that won't work quite, you know, the first time, or the second time, or the third time, but going back to my skill set of being tenacious, I will keep doing it until it works. This is, this is how, you know, this is how you do it. And I will start to find other people to feel the same way that I do and start collaborating with them as well. It's the way, you know, if they keep, and I'll also, you know, go outside of the board and go to the public and try to find out, you know, "How do you all want it? Do you want things to go into executive session, or do you want them to stay in the public forum?" And that's the way it works for me, that not just to rely on the 38 members of the board, but also to look outside and try to find collaborators who will join me in this fight to keep as many topics as possible in open session and in open forums and out of these closed-door executive sessions.
Okay. Very good. Jay, we've got Jay, we've got a question for you. Can you please indicate your top three forward-looking topics that the trustees must address?
Well, I talked about those earlier on, one being the cost. And I think one of the things we've got to talk about, everybody talks about tuition and says, you know, "All-in, in-state." Let's talk about not just the tuition, but room, board, books, and tuition. You're talking $31,000 roughly, based on Penn State's own numbers on their website. At-a-state, you're talking $45,000, $46,000. We get caught up in the number of what it costs per year. What I would propose is, let's talk about what it costs to get a degree. Do we need eight semesters? Do students need 45 general education credits to graduate if they come to Penn State knowing they want to be an accountant, an engineer, or they want to go to med school when they graduate? We've got to put all options on the table. So instead of eight, if you go from eight semesters to seven semesters to get a degree, I know it's a radical idea, but we've got to put everything on the table for the future of Penn State and for the future of this country. So right there, you're cutting 12.5% on tuition costs for what it takes to get to that degree. And not everybody has to fall into that track. And I understand the politics that go on on a campus as it relates to the general education courses and those kind of things. So that's one of the things that I would talk about. One of the things I want to talk about is initiative to inspire excellence in our young students as they come to Penn State. We have a very, very difficult challenge ahead of us because of the way students communicate. I have five kids in my house, and they don't communicate with me very well sometimes, but that's just the way it goes because I'm their father. But the way they communicate is dramatically different than the way we communicated and the way we communicate. And we've got to understand that. We've got to reach them in new and exciting ways. We've got to have some younger voices on this board and younger voices in this administration that are going to find ways to engage them. And I think, you know, one of the other things we talk about is an open and inclusive and transparent governance. That's got to be a real challenge for us going forward because of the fact that, as we look at what's happening and what has happened in the past, there's a mistrust that has occurred between the board and many of our constituents. And one last thing that I think is a challenge that we're going to face as it relates to the tuition is, when you look at Penn State's funding sources, number two is tuition dollars, number three is research funding, and number five is estate appropriation. When you look at it, two of those things are going to be under challenge. When you look at the directives coming out of what's happening in Washington, the amount of money for research in science is being threatened by the current administration. That's not to get into politics of it or not, of one way or the other, but that's reality. The other reality is that state funding is going to be a challenge forever. So there's a challenge.
Very good. Thank you. Robert, what is your position on the Free Report? The full board has yet to repudiate it. How specifically would you propose doing so?
I would say, "Repudiate it, period." It's, a lot of people, when they talk about the Free Report, for obvious reasons, focus on the first part of the report, what I call the accusations. And then, when people defend the Free Report, you often hear them talking about the other part of the Free Report, which is the recommendations. Now, we can all sit here and debate back and forth whether these recommendations are going to make Penn State a better place. But no one will ever convince me that a bunch of recommendations is worth over $8 million. It's also, when you go back to the accusations portion, you have to look at that and say, and this is, again, my opinion, that the Free Report desecrated Penn State's good name and that, as Jay was pointing out, that the value of our degrees is tied closely to Penn State's good name. And so in order for students and young alumni to benefit as much from their Penn State educations as we, alumni, many of us alumni have, myself included, we have to repudiate the Free Report in order to be vigilant about protecting Penn State's good name. Thank you, Dan.
Alice, this one's for you. With the recent court decisions on Tim Curley, Gary Schultz, and Graham Spanier recently handed down, how do you propose that the Penn State community move on?
That's such an important question, and it's something that the alumni elected trustees discuss on almost a daily basis and have for as long as I've been a trustee. We don't want to keep the university stuck in the past, but the idea that we can move forward without coming to a true resolution about what happened in regard to the Sandusky situation is just a falsity. It just cannot be done. And why is that? Because we are not a corporation. Our brand is not Coca-Cola. Our brand is our culture, and our culture was criticized as being responsible for children being abused. I believe that victims deserve the truth, and it's very, very touchy to talk about victims. But I'm a child psychologist, a career academic clinical psychologist, and only by learning about exactly what happened can we prevent future abuse. Sacrificing a few people as scapegoats does not help us learn the appropriate lessons. And so what we learned from this trial and the plea bargains of the other two was that, first of all, there was no conspiracy and there was no cover-up. And so the idea that football was protected by people who did not value the safety of children, that's a lie. That is absolutely a lie. And we know that now, and we need to build on that. It seems abundantly clear to me that Sandusky groomed an entire community of people who were not aware. That is consistent with the misdemeanor conviction of Graham Spanier, which may well be overturned, and the plea bargain of the other two, Schultz and Curley. They said they wished they had done more in retrospect, but they also said that they believed that they did the right and appropriate and responsible thing at the time. Let's understand, let's learn the true lesson. Let's prevent future victimization by using education to protect our children.
Okay, Alice, thank you. We're at the point where we're going to ask some questions of the incumbents first and then the new candidates. So I'm going to start with the incumbents. Bob, you were elected by alumni in May of 2014. Can you believe it's been three years? Over that time, what would you describe --
It's a loaded question.
Over that time, what would you describe as your biggest accomplishments and contribution to Penn State?
Well, no, I can't believe it's three years. That's the easy part. Yeah, it's gone by quickly. It was something that I always wanted to do. I had the opportunity to be appointed by several governors when spots became open, and I always felt it was a conflict of interest and that I could frankly be more helpful to Penn State in the budget process if I was not on the board. Having been on the board, it's been a revelation. There's no question that there's been a lot to learn. The nine elected alumni trustees have met, and Alice and Ted Brown have been responsible for having us meet the day before the board meets. We sit and we caucus, basically, on what the issues are and how we are going to handle them. I think that's been very helpful. What we've been able to accomplish, I think, very recently, with trustee Lebrano, who is here, and I think seven of us filed a suit against the university to get an unredacted Free Report. They absolutely refused to give it to us. And we were successful at the common pleas level of getting that report. And then, when we asked that the attorney's fees be paid, they said no. And then we were told, "We don't pay attorney's fees." For those who sued us, Commonwealth Court has reversed that decision by the common pleas judge. And that was an important win. That's an important -- that Free Report is the linchpin of everything that's happened that has really hurt Penn State, more than anything else. So by getting that and reviewing it, I really think that the future holds some positive things for what we stood for.
Alice, same question to you about the three years, again. And what do you describe as your biggest accomplishments and contributions?
Well, I came onto the board really interested in improving governance, and we've talked about transparency, and we've talked about how to promote it, and what does that really mean. I agree with Bob that gaining access to the free source materials was an important step because that will enable us to understand and come to good decisions about the Free Report. But what a lot of people don't realize is the fact that we were able to gain access to materials owned by the university on the basis of needing them for decision-making, which the Pennsylvania nonprofit law guarantees to trustees, that has had a ripple effect, which has allowed us to request and obtain information that previously was withheld from us. And one example for that is the trustee seats that are selected by the board, which used to be business and industry, continues to be business and industry, and now, in addition, the at-large trustees. For years before I was on the board, my colleagues patiently and politely said, "May we have information about the candidates you considered? What were the priorities that you understood were necessary? And why did you choose to recommend the particular person who you're now asking us to vote for yes or no?" And the answer was, "Oh, that's confidential. You can't know that. Now, that's absurd. You need to understand what is the basis for that recommendation." And once we were successful in court after that, we were able to request that information. And now, the board, the full board, not just us, everyone has the ability to understand more about how do we go about choosing the trustees that we are responsible for electing to the board. Prior to that, it really was equivalent to the chair appointing it because the chair appointed the selection committee. The selection committee chose one name with no further explanation other than a bio, and the rest of the board had to vote up or down. So there is more to be done there, but that was a pretty good advance, I think.
Good, Alice. Okay, Bob, over the course of the last three years, several votes have been taken. Of those votes, which ones are the most proud of? Which ones are you most disappointed in? And why did you vote that way?
How come she gets the easy question?
You're going to go get both of them, so go ahead. Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Most proud?
Well, you know something, believe it or not, one of the things we were really proud of last year was we didn't increase tuition. And by golly, that was a proud moment because it's been a history of increasing tuition. One of the disappointments was, seriously, and we keep referring to it, is that the Free Report stands out there in limbo, and trustee Lord was the one that introduced the resolution that we act on it and reject it. And so it's disappointing when you're nine against 29. And I'm trying to think of some other things, but...
The last question is, why did you vote that way on the, you know, both disappointed ones and outcomes?
Why did we vote? I would vote --
Why did you vote?
Because I think it's, the ultimate goal, I hope, at least in my mind, is that we can bring this board together. I want to see that happen. I want to be on the board and help make it happen. But to make it happen, there are certain things that have to occur, coming from the majority trustee, you can't call him whole guard anymore, there's only three left, and the chairman, Lubert, is certainly in a position to make that happen. Little disappointment that we haven't made more progress.
Okay, good. Alice, same question for you. How about the most proud, most disappointed, and why?
The vote that I regret making was the one to approve the corpsman settlement of the NCAA funds. We were rushed through that decision. We learned afterwards of some information that we had not been given at the time that we voted, and I think several of us were disappointed that we allowed ourselves to be rushed, knowing the history of this board, of what happens when you rush into a decision. And I vowed that I would never be rushed through a decision again. Most proud, I've been proud to support zero tuition increases for in-state students. I've been proud to support our proposals that have been directed at properly addressing the conclusions of the Free Report. You continue to do the thing that is right, even if you know you're going to lose.
Good. One last question for the incumbents, and then we'll go back to Robert and Jay. One of the biggest wins for Penn State alumni who are fighting for transparency was that I promised in the 2015 court ruling, giving alumni elected trustees the unredacted access to the free source, free material that we talked about. Can you please talk about your individual contributions and what do you expect moving forward? Bob, first.
I think Alice and I were both plaintiffs on that lawsuit. And if, what do I expect from the report? I expect from the report that we're going to learn an awful lot that is going to be relevant to how Penn State goes forward. The fight that they gave us, the opposition to us knowing anything, would only lead one to believe that there are things in that report that, and I know that as they come, I haven't been able to read as much as they have due to only being able to read with one eye. But I know that when I was doing it, and as others have done, they're finding things that are going to really be very, very significant toward the future of this university. Only in that way, as I say, can we move forward. I don't know how else to frame it, but that's, I believe that very strongly.
Good. Alice, how about you? Individual contributions to that effort and moving forward?
So there are 3.5 million documents, and we're all amateurs and volunteers. It was pretty overwhelming at first, and we really kind of struggled around in the beginning, trying to understand how do we actually approach this in a systematic, careful way. I have been one of the leaders, perhaps in some ways the leader, of the analysis of the source materials. I've organized the work effort. We've all been a very well-functioning collaborative group. I've made assignments to people. People have been very generous in responding to my assignments. We're working very well. We are writing a report, and I am the primary author of the report, where I am integrating the materials and, you know, coming up with the conclusions of what we found. And we will be bringing this report to the board, and I hope that we will do the right thing. But that's kind of as much as I can say. We're constrained by a court order to talk anymore about what we find. I hope the board will do the right thing. I hope the board will do the right thing. We will make it possible for the board to understand what they need to know in order to do the right thing.
Okay, new candidates. I'm going to start with Jay on this one. Jay, some feel that, given your lineage, you could face significant challenges inside the boardroom from trustees who simply will not be able to see past the messenger. How do you respond?
Well, I've been dealing with that for 20 years of coaching, so, I mean, I've gotten that before. But I think the thing is this, is if I'm fortunate enough to be elected and honored to serve, I think day one, they're going to understand a couple of things. I have a great passion for Penn State, I always have. I grew up in a home where I was around some of the visionary leaders that have ever set foot on this campus and been a part of this campus. So I understand how things happened and how things did happen in the past. I understand that you can never truly, the great thing about universities is that they existed before us, and they will exist long after we're gone. And I understand the history of this place. So I'm not going to go in there with the idea that, "Let's just butt heads for three years and hope to get reelected." The idea is, we're going to go in there with the idea that, you know, as I said earlier, I'm going to open my hand and extend my hand, and if they want to take it, great. If they don't, that's on them. And we'll make sure that people understand that. But, you know, I'm not afraid of how they're going to respond to me. I'm going to make sure that I respond to them in a way that's appropriate. I understand why many of them are going to think the way they think about certain things, but the idea is to understand where they come from and then allow them the way for their feelings, but also try and educate them as to why things should be different than they are. So I'm not going to be worried about how they respond to me.
Good. Robert? Robert, who do you think are the most relevant stakeholders of the university? In what ways has the board failed to meet their needs? And how can the board improve processes to meet their needs?
Thank you, Dan. The stakeholders would be the faculty, the staff, the alumni, the students, and the parents. Not necessarily in that order, it depends on the topic you're talking about. In terms of the students and the parents, there's no question that this, these constant room and board hikes and tuition hikes that have brought our tuition up to the levels that it's at now, over $200,000 now for a four-year education for an out-of-state student. I was an out-of-state student, so I could certainly relate. It was, my parents told me it was $28,000 to put me through school in the 1980s. Now it is over $200,000. I think we have definitely let them down, and as I proposed before, I think the university needs to, instead of hitting the students and parents anymore with tuition hikes and room and board increases, that instead what they, what we need to do is maximize alternative revenue sources, like the Hershey Medical Center and like the online world campus, which is headquartered in the city where I live, in San Diego. In terms of the faculty and staff, I think by employing this, what Dr. Ben Novak calls a power-from-above system in the work environment at University Park and at other campuses, we've let the faculty and staff down in that sense, where we need instead to give the faculty and staff the community-oriented work environment that they deserve. I work right now out in San Diego at a company called Delarex, which started about six years ago. It's, my boss is 20 years younger than I am, and it's a very young company. I am the old man at 52 in this company, but I can tell you right now, as being their director of human resources, in addition to being their senior accountant, the millennials are very clear, they want a community-oriented work environment. And that's, that will, if we can put that in, which is already going on, as I said, at many of the Commonwealth campuses, like Barron, Beaver, and Abington, if we can put that in at University Park as well, will certainly help out our faculty and staff. In terms of the alumni, of course, you know, everything that went down with the free report, you know, by not repudiating this report and by not endorsing it either, the Board of Trustees has let the alumni down. And it's particularly the young alumni who are depending on Penn State University's good name to help them get the jobs that they need in this very challenging economy.
Okay, Robert, thank you. Appreciate it. Jay, in your position statement, you write, "Together we must create faculty and students empowered to pursue and speak truth, to build leadership in an array of disciplines." Given how we've seen the past and the current leadership handle the concept of truth, what do you propose to meet such a lofty goal?
Well, I think we've got to make sure that our faculty and alumni, faculty and students understand that they can pursue things, whether it's research, whether it's grants, without any fear of reprisal. I can tell you, a number of faculty members that I've talked to have told me that there is definitely a sense on this campus of we and them, as it relates to the administration. That's not one faculty member, that's not two, that's several. That's many people have come to me with that, and I've heard, hear it over and over again, because I live in State College. And one of the things that keeps coming back to is, that's not how it was six, seven years ago. So we've got to make sure that there is some accountability. One of the things I've talked about, and I want to talk about in the future, is having a, you know, we have a faculty member on the board, but we should also have some board members that have open-door policy with faculty members. I would love to be that guy, because of the fact that I live in State College. And when there are issues, when there are threats, when there are things that may or may not impede what they want to do, have them understand, they can come to me, and they can come to other members of the board and understand. I know there is a reporting structure. I know that there are certain things in place, but we've got to go outside sometimes. We've got to think differently than we have in the past. I know in my own situation, in leaving Penn State, there was a part of my agreement that the university still has not honored. So I know those things happen, and I understand what some of these people are feeling, the frustration they feel. I've been stopped by people all of, all the time, in supermarkets, in downtown, walking around, that have said, hey, keep, keep fighting, because the same thing happened to my husband or something happened to my cousin or something, and the university is active with impunity. So we've got to make sure that there is some responsibility on our part as board members to make sure that we are creating those kind of environments, and we've got to have some communication.
Robert, what is your vision for making Penn State a world-class institution? Two minutes.
Thank you, Dan. There's no question, the future of Penn State is to spread Penn State's great name across the country and throughout the world. And the primary vehicle to use to do this is the World Campus, which, as I said before, is headquartered in San Diego. Through online education, which will never replace classroom education, by the way, I see them working side by side. In fact, many Penn State students now are enrolled in online courses in addition to their classroom courses for various reasons. But the World Campus, what it can do is let people know that Penn State is more than just a great school in Pennsylvania. There are over 12,000 students currently enrolled in the World Campus, and also because of the way that World Campus has been set up financially with the university, right now, World Campus is pouring tens of millions of dollars back into the university. The way it works, as it has been described to me, is that students will pay their tuitions for the online courses to the World Campus. The World Campus will take the percentage it needs to cover its costs, and then it will give back to whatever department or college either taught the course or developed the course. And this is done through what they call an inter-campus transaction, which, in the business world, we would call an inter-company transaction. I'm an accountant, I've booked many of these before. This is the most direct way to move cash from one entity to another when you have a large, complex organization like Penn State. And so I'm really glad to hear that the World Campus is already set up this way. And also, it's, to me, the way you can make the Penn State education more affordable too, is through the World Campus. In addition, as the World Campus grows, and we need more and more online courses, what you can, one option you can do is to do a distance learning center. And the distance learning center would then act like the way the departments and the colleges are acting now. And so when World Campus, again, takes its percentage, it would pay then, let's say, back to the distance learning center. The distance learning center would do the same thing, take its percentage for its costs, and then the rest of the money can be spread either across the university, or better yet, it could be, it could be used to subsidize tuition. And that way, we can keep the Penn State education affordable while at the same time spreading Penn State's great name across the country and throughout the world.
Okay, very good, Robert. Thank you. We've got one last question for Bob, and then we're going to go into the final thoughts and wrap up in closing statements.
Make it an easy one.
Well, I don't know. You'll have to see. What can be done about the conflicts of interest with the board members when doling out contracts?
That's a great, that's a great question. There are, I have been told, I am not personally aware of what those conflicts are, but I have been told that there are conflicts of interest in real estate and in using Penn State as a means by which you can gain income or something for your client, as the case may be. I would think that it's already, if it's, that that conflict of interest is probably already ingrained in some kind of a, in fact, I'm sure it is, in some kind of a resolution of somewhat importance. It's just not enforced.
Right.
The question is, when powerful people have powerful positions, things don't get done, and it's wrong. It's just doggone wrong. I know I have been asked myself by people who say, can you do this for me or do that for me? And I say, no, I can't, because it would be a conflict of interest for me, and I'm not about to, I didn't do that in 32 years in the Senate, and I'm not doing it now. So, but I fear that it's already there, and that, Dan, and that it's just not being enforced.
Okay, well, we brought it up. Now, we're going to go into our final thoughts and closing remarks. I'm going to start with Alice and work our way around, and a minute, maybe two minutes. We've still got a little time, so go ahead.
I'm sorry, is there a question or I just...
There's a question. This is your final thoughts and closing statement to tell us why we should elect you to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. There is an enormously steep learning curve to be on this board. Penn State is an enormously complex institution. There are many moving parts. Higher education today is very complicated, changing very rapidly. No one can predict the future except to say that it's going to be a bumpy ride. I've spent a tremendous amount of time trying to get up to speed, and I really just feel in the last year or so, I'm starting to become the kind of trustee that I've wanted to be and that I feel that Penn State deserves. Now I want to really make use of that to be a more effective trustee. And part of that has to do with having developed good working relationships with my colleagues, not just with the alumni elected trustees, because if we stay in our hole together, you know, we'll, we'll never get anything done. But I believe that I've been able to form relationships with colleagues who have come to respect my judgment. We may not always agree, but we find ways to sort through difficult issues together so that we come to a joint understanding. That is the kind of thing that is going to get us past the crisis and get the issues of the past just out of the way, so that we can really focus on Penn State's future, which everyone wants to do.
Alice?
Are we done?
Yeah, we're done. Jay, one minute.
Okay, one minute?
Yeah, I'll give you one minute.
All right, I'll see what I can do. Listen, Robert F. Kennedy once said, "The only reason to get into politics is to use your position to help people in trouble." I think there is no question that necessarily, we may not necessarily be in trouble, but Penn State faces some very interesting times ahead. There are interesting times for higher education in this country. What I bring that I believe is unique is this. I bring leadership skills, I bring an outsider's perspective, but also with the idea that I've been part of the inside of this university for many, many years, and I've seen some of its greatest days. And I believe some of its greatest days can be ahead of us. But I think it's going to take people who are willing to challenge the status quo, people who have demonstrated an ability and a willingness to fight, no matter what the personal cost may be. And I believe I bring that into this candidacy, I can really believe I can bring that to this board. And I want this board to be, to go back to what it's about. This board is supposed to serve and not be served. We are here to serve the people, not the other way around, and that's what I want to be a part of. I feel that that is what is going to be best for Penn State's future, and it's going to want to make us great again.
Bob, one minute, final thoughts.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do anything in one minute, but, no. Penn State is without a doubt revered across, not only across the country, but across the world and has been. It's been hit pretty hard. My experience in the first three years, frankly, were a lot of learning experience, and frankly, a lot of things that I could use in my leadership position in the Senate. I think that the alumni of Penn State are crying out, crying out to get this thing solved. It's gone on a long time. To do that, I've said over and over again, let's reject the free report, let's move on and bring, bring people together. It's so divided now, and I truly believe that the skill set that I would bring to the board and have brought to the board gives me more, more than perhaps anybody else, the experience to be able to bring people together. That's what I'm all about, and, but hopefully, we will see progress in these next couple of years.
Very good, Bob. Robert, you got the last call.
Thank you, Dan. Grandma Bauschur used to say to me, "Everything in its time, Robert, everything in its time." P S 4 R S and fellow alumni, it's time. I'm asking for your votes and support, because it's time for the Board of Trustees to represent the Penn State we all know and love. And when that happens, Penn State will reach the end of this terrible storm that began in November 2011, and Penn State will reach the promising future that will ensure a storm like this one never happens again. I thank you all for your time, and I thank you all for your participation in this election, and I wish you all the best. And I wish for Penn State what we all wish for it, the brightest possible future.
Very good. Thank you all. Now, we're going to conclude. I'd like to say a few things. I'd like to thank the candidates for taking time out of their busy schedules to join us in the studio for this special event. In the spirit of truth and transparency, it's wonderful and refreshing to have open dialogue about the challenges and opportunities that face Penn State, and how we, as an engaged alumni, can contribute to the governance of one of the finest universities in the country. I'd like to remind you that there's a link on today's event available at www.p s4rs.org, and as well on the P S 4 R S Facebook page, and through other social media platforms. We encourage you to watch, to share the link with your fellow alumni and Penn Staters, and to remain engaged by helping us select our three candidates for this year's elections. We're very thankful for the ongoing support of Penn State and Penn Staters for responsible stewardship. Good evening and have a great day. Thank you all.